Good morning, and welcome to the August 11th, 2021 City Council Meeting. We will start with the invocation followed by the pledge, if you'll please stand with me. Dear heavenly Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for this council. I thank you for this city, this community. I thank you for our police and fire and just ask that you keep all of them safe and just all the staff. Lord is this, we've kind of entered back into this next era of COVID. I just ask that you keep us safe and keep all of our families safe as well. Just thank you for our city. Ask that everything we do is pleasing to you. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we will start off with the minutes from the June 23rd, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve this presentation.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, one.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the City of Tyler, here this morning to talk about ordinance change to our bicycle ordinances. So as a summary of the overview, so this, Chapter 17 of our ordinances addresses bicycle lanes routes. So this is adding additional bicycle routes that are associated with our Bike Stripes Project that is underway right now. It also removes a few portions of some of the old routes that were on our ordinances. It also, a big portion of this is it deletes Section 152, which addresses driving and parking restrictions on bicycle lanes, exclusive bicycle lanes. And then also, it deletes unnecessary references to penalties associated with this section of the ordinance. And then it amends the official map, so we have a map that shows every signed route within the City of Tyler. So that's just really a quick summary of these ordinance changes. I have the map, if you want to see it. It was also in your agenda packet. But it is recommended that council consider adopting this attached ordinance, amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 17, to include new routes associated with Bike Stripes Project, to remove portions of old routes that are no longer applicable due to the Bike Stripes Project, deleting Section 17152, dealing with driving and parking restrictions associated with exclusive bicycle lanes, and amending the official map showing all designated signed bicycle routes within the City of Tyler.
So for purposes of clarification, what can people do in the bicycle lanes? Can they park their car?
They can still park their cars. Yes, sir.
Can they run, exercise, trash cans?
So there's actually, I think, some guidance that's going to be coming out on the trash cans specifically. I think the solid waste, they're actually supposed to be behind the curb, is what the guidance from solid waste is on the trash cans.
Well, I know at one point there was discussion regarding, you know, what you can and can't do in the bicycle lanes, and so thanks for the clarification.
What about, and you can drive in it if there's not a bicycle in the lane at the time? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I've had that exact question.
Any other questions for Cameron?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So this is addressing a preliminary engineering design report for the Grande reverse curve. And to give you an idea of the location, if you're not familiar with this, on Grande, roughly between Hollitree and Old Jacksonville Highway, there's a reverse curve or an S curve in the roadway. At this location, there have been multiple accidents, and here's just kind of a summary over the past 10 years. This comes from the text dot Chris database system, and it kind of gives you a breakdown of the accidents that have occurred at this location. And these are just a couple of pictures of some of the property damage that has occurred associated with one of the crashes. This is an apartment complex that is on the north side of Grande in this section of roadway. And so what we're presenting to you today is the preliminary engineering report. So this is going to do a couple of different things for this project. We're going to take a deep dive, look at the crash history. What has happened here? What are the causes? And then be able to take that, kind of compare it to a similar type roadway facility. Is this expected, unexpected, as it relates to that type of facility? Then look at different solutions, improvements from, you know, low cost, mid cost, you know, higher cost solutions, to give us better objective data on what we can do. This contract also includes a couple of different pieces. We've included also additional services for highway safety improvement program. You may have remembered in our half cent presentation last month, we have several projects that we were awarded last year with funding for those projects that we get matches for. This also allows for, during this project, to do a screening for new projects if that call comes out and do applications. So that's part of the funding in this. Also, we just have some contingency built in, and there's, for example, surveying is in here. If we need it during this portion, we'd go ahead and do surveying, and that would roll into a final design of whatever the solution may be. So there's different components that make up this contract amount. So it is recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a new engineering contract with CT Branding Corporation for the Grande reverse curve preliminary engineering report and highway safety improvement project screening applications in the amount of $95,943.
Any questions for Cameron?
Cameron, is there a set number of crashes that occur in a roadway like this that would trigger this type of study?
So that's kind of not necessarily a set number of crashes, but we do have this history and concern here. And so one of the deep things that, with this study, we will look at the number of crashes, the types of crashes, and there's kind of equations and functions to say for this type of facility, just for numbers sake. So you'd expect 10 crashes, and we've had eight, so it's less than you'd expect. Or we have had 20, which is two times you expect. So that's part of the deep dive that we will do as part of this, to really kind of, because there's a lot of feelings and a lot of, you know, what's going on here, and that's the purpose behind this approach that we're taking.
Cameron, just because the number might be, like you said, eight compared to 10, are you also looking at the severity of the crashes for this type of roadway?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
What about the road conditions? Do most of the accidents happening when it's raining?
So again, that's kind of where we're kind of looking at, when have these crashes occurred? Has it been when it was wet? Has it been when it's at night? Do we need lighting? Those are type of things that we'll want to help dig down into and identify. So if it's raining, maybe just that friction factor of increasing that is what we need to do, and we continually maintain that.
Are there specific remedial measures that y'all are interested in looking in, or is everything on the table from a permanent solid barricade throughout the entire curve or a median or anything else that y'all are specifically looking at?
At this point, we're going to keep all options on the table. So it could be from a raised curve to, maybe it's just additional pavement friction and signage. You've seen the lighted Chevron type signs through a curve, to maybe a full reconstruction to try to work on that alignment. So those are all things that we want to try to evaluate and keep on the table at this point, and identify kind of the costs associated with those improvements versus what you expect the benefit to get and address.
Good. I think it's necessary. I mean, it's definitely a concern of the residents of District One being a major roadway and the history, the severity of the accidents there. I think this is definitely something that's needed.
Any other comments? I agree. This is needed, and I don't think you're going to see anybody or hear anybody complain about having this study done, so thanks for getting me on the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. This is a request for ratification of expenditures for the emergency replacement of a storm sewer pipe located under the street on the 100 block of East Houston. The storm sewer pipe at this location collapsed, creating multiple sinkholes in the asphalt street above. Due to heavy rainfall and traffic on that street, it quickly began to deteriorate, requiring an emergency repair. The repair included the replacement of approximately 172 linear feet of storm sewer pipe and the repair of the street surface and curb and gutter above. We contacted several contractors for bids, however, only Reynolds &amp; Kay was able to mobilize quickly to prevent additional damage to the street. With that, it is recommended that the City Council consider ratifying expenditures in the amount of $53,439.30 for the work performed for the emergency repair of the storm pipe located under the street at the 100 block of East Houston.
Any questions for Sarah?
Move to approve, M2.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Sarah. M3, Davis.
Just good morning.
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 This first item is your consideration to award a new construction contract for the Holly Park Drainage Improvement Project. This kind of gives the construction, then, it's their Holly Creek Drive and Holly Star Drive. Kind of give you an idea, it's Holly Creek and it fits our core. The goal here is to try to route water away from homes, the Holly Creek Drive and surrounding streets. Due to some flooding problems in the past, a drainage study was performed and found that really that system's undersized. So with that scope and that drainage study, we looked at a general scope for the project of installing three new curbing lets, and actually the fourth one would be removal of an existing one, enlarging it and enlarging the concrete pipe that ties to the existing system. So with that scope, the project was publicly advertised for bids. Two bidders were interested and submitted bids, Reynolds &amp; Kay and Fritcher Construction Services. And you can see the bids, and the low bid being Reynolds &amp; Kay at $434,767. And just to kind of give you an idea of how it relates to the engineer's estimate, you can see it was $505,175. So it's a little bit below the estimate. And just so you know, this was included in the 10-year program far as the 10-year half cent sales tax program. So it fits within the budget. And yesterday, the Half Cent Sales Tax Board reviewed this project and unanimously recommended funding the project upon award. So what we're here today is to ask your consideration to award the construction contract to Reynolds &amp; Kay for the Holly Park Drainage Improvement Project in an amount of $434,767.
Any questions for Davis?
Davis, and this may not be something that you can answer, but just wondering about, because we're doing a lot of work, drainage work, and certainly sewer system, all that, on systems that have failed over time. But you said this one's undersized, and I just wonder, do we ever go back and say, what happened? You know, because we're spending a lot of money to fix something that's not broken, it just doesn't sound like it was the right system to put in in the first place.
Yeah, in this case, far as the history and how it was designed before, I'm really not too familiar with it.
And that's kind of unfair to ask you.
Yeah, but I do know, like, this, if then one home has actually had water in it.
Yeah, a lot of questions that needs to be done.
Yeah. And so, you know, my hope is, it's like the development projects, and I think, you know, top of the city engineer, we talked about it, and how that may, that we can take a closer look at making sure things are sized properly for future development, too.
You know, in our infrastructure committee meeting, that's one of the things we talked about, that the cost to oversize is so much less than the cost to come back and redo it. So hopefully, we'll take that into consideration.
I think so, because this is a case of, you know, with existing inlet, I mentioned that fourth inlet, we'll say, it's going to be enlarging that pipe, too, to the existing system to try to alleviate this problem.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, M4, is to consider awarding a new construction contract for the Cloverdale Drainage Improvement Project. And again, this project involves, runs along Cloverdale Drive, Silverwood Drive, from Capertown Boulevard to Woodlark Drive. You can see it involves quite a bit of installation of new, when you say RCP, reinforced concrete pipe. Here again, this also is a result of a drainage study and from our stormwater crews that have actually been out and looked at the site. There's corrugated metal pipe that has collapsed or is leaking, and again, kind of an overgrown swell that's really not handling the water volume. So the general scope of it is replace some of this metal pipe with, you know, reinforced concrete pipe, and in some cases, with that reinforced, or the corrugated metal pipe, actually filling it and just plugging it up and filling it properly. Try to redirect the drains to the new closed storm sewer system that would be constructed of the reinforced concrete pipe and install a new box culvert. Again, we had two bidders for this project, Reynolds &amp; Kay and Fritcher Construction Services. And you can see there the engineer's estimate at $3.2 million. So this project came in a little over the estimate, but still fits within that 10-year program that we have for the Half Cent Sales Tax Program. So it fits within the budget. So again, Half Cent Sales Tax Board reviewed this yesterday, went into a lot of detail about that, and they did recommend that we go ahead and fund that, or they did approve the funding for it upon execution of the contract. So today, well, I'll tell you why. So today, we're asking your consideration to award this contract to Reynolds &amp; Kay, the low bidder, for $3,356,265.70.
Any questions for Davis?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Davis.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Morning.
Mayor, Council, I'm city manager, I'm here in front of you today to ratify a payment to issue emergency payment for repair of a 24-inch sanitary sewer line, manhole rehabilitation, realigned sewer line, and construct a six tenths of a mile access road to the site to be paid out of capital funds. This is over by the Delic Refinery Site. It captures water. The water, the sewer line comes through box culverts under the railroad track, and then to a manhole column, pylons supporting the pipe. You have some pictures in your packet that should be representative of the construction that took place. Two of those pylons had failed, water, I think, undermining the footing, therefore the pipe came out of alignment. It's ductile iron pipe, so it cracked the top barrel on the manhole. We had a leak there, we got that fixed, but we had to come in there and make, take care of this. Our concern was, this is due to be upsized to a 30-inch line in the future as a part of the consent decree, 23, 24. But when we looked at what we had, we just did not think we could wait till that timeline, because this is about a million gallons a day through this line, and if it collapsed, then we've got a million gallons a day in the waterway created there. So we took the, had the emergency repair. So AESU did the work for us. The box culverts were undermined at their lip. We had rubble put in place there to stabilize those, bypass pumping to maintain uninterrupted flow. And you should have their pictures, and I would ask that you would ratify that payment today for the payment of this work.
So you say it was upsized from 24 to 30?
It was up to 30, yes.
And not yet.
So any questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Move to approve, approve, M5.
Second.
Who was the second pro? Motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have a few items to go over with you all today. The first one is item M6 for the sanitary sewer reroutes and rehabilitation work for Group 2. Group 2 had four packages total, the traditional manhole work, the specialty manhole and pipe rehabilitation work, the traditional gravity main work, which are all currently in construction. And today, I'm here to award the sanitary sewer reroutes. The sanitary sewer reroutes consisted of approximately 1,400 linear feet of pipe replacement and new pipe installation, and approximately 400 linear feet of cured-in-place or CIPP liner. There are also four point repairs and manhole replacements that are a part of this package. We received two bids on this project, CNA and AND Construction, with the low bid from CNA Construction in the amount of $423,250.74. And I request that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with CNA Construction in the amount of $423,250.74 for the consent decree, Group 2 Sanitary Sewer reroutes and rehabilitation project.
Any questions or comments for Tiffany?
Move to approve, M6.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M7.
Thank you. M7 is the Engineering Services Contract with Langen Adams for the Consent Decree Group 4 work. This work, very much structured like our previous three projects, consists of gravity mains, just over 35,000 linear feet, were identified by pipeline analysis as poor or very poor condition, needing remediation. And that estimated construction cost is right at 5.6 million. The package will also include manholes. There were 4,100 manholes assessed by pipeline analysis, and just over 1,300 were identified as needing remediation. And we anticipate that the manhole construction cost will be just a little over $3 million. So the contract I'm bringing to you today is for engineering services. It includes the design of the manholes and gravity main that require remediation, as well as construction phase services for those projects. We will have various types of construction, just as in the previous packages, manhole coating, cured-in-place pipe, open cut, traditional work, as well as point repairs. The total estimated construction cost is just over $9 million, with an engineering fee of $1,850,000. My request is that the City Council consider authorizing the manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount of $1,850,000 with Langen Adams for the consent decree, Group 4 Manhole and Main Line Remediation Work.
I've got one card here before I call this card. Anybody having questions for Tiffany? Card here from Tracy Williams. Don't wish to speak. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M8.
Thank you. Item M8 is the Engineering Services Contract with Garver for the wastewater treatment plant master plan. Back in October of 2020, Pipeline Analysis and L&amp;B completed a hydraulic model capacity assessment along with a remediation plan to evaluate any of the capacity constraints that we have in our system. A plan came out of that that was submitted to the EPA in October, and one item that was noted in that plan is that the city really needs to look at our wastewater treatment plant capacity, because as we free up capacity in the system and start increasing the sizes of our system, we are going to increase loading at our plants, which are already quite overloaded. So we started the selection process for a consultant to complete our wastewater treatment plant master plan. We requested qualifications in May, and we received four submittals. There was a selection committee that consisted of myself, Paul Newhouse, Mike Norris, Councilman Winn, and our interim utilities director, Doug Fox. So we all reviewed the submittals, we met and actually had a unanimous recommendation of Garver Engineering based on their qualifications. What this master plan will consist of, it will be a comprehensive review and evaluation of our existing plants, how they're functioning, how they're operating, what the capacity levels are. It will include south side, west side, as well as evaluation of an additional wastewater treatment plant south of town. Included in the master plan will be a 30-year capital improvements plan. This is the part we're really excited about. Not only are they going to evaluate our system and tell us what challenges we have, they will recommend capital improvement projects, what types of items might trigger those, whether it's regulatory compliance issues, if it's capacity, and we will know exactly when we need to start the project. So that plan will be a part of the master plan. This is approximately a 16-month project, and along the way, we will have five technical memorandums that are issued to us so that we know where they're at, what they're working on, as well as monthly meetings. And we will, I'm sure, pull our infrastructure committee into a few of those meetings. And then, of course, the final results will be a master plan report that we will be able to utilize to move forward and determine what our next steps need to be. The engineering fee for this is $838,541. And my request today is that the City Council would consider authorizing the manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount of $838,541 with Garver for the wastewater treatment plant master plan.
Any questions or comments for Tiffany?
I do. Tiffany, was KSA asked to participate or offer an RFP?
They did. They did submit a qualifications packet to us.
And I understand that they've got a history of engineering design, of all phases of our wastewater treatment system over the last few decades.
Yes, sir. That is correct. They have a very extensive design history with us.
Well, knowing that Ms. Dietz- Well, knowing that Ms. Dietz is on vacation, and being a past chair of the chamber, I believe in, in do business local first, I would like to make a motion that we table this item, M8, until the next council meeting, where we can get a report back from Ms. Dietz and get some clarification of reasons why we would go outside of Tyler, Texas for these engineering services.
Yes, sir. The entire selection committee is present today. If you're, if you would like to hear from anyone, I'm sure they'd be happy to give you feedback.
Who are the other firms also? There's half, KSA, half.
Yes, half, KSA, Garver, and KSA was partnered with Kimley-Horn. Garver and Adams Engineering were the four that submitted proposals.
So let me ask, is, is KSA, I know they've got a local office. Are they, are they in Longview, Dallas?
They do. They have other offices. I can't remember exactly how many other offices they have. Based on the submittal that they gave us, they have a lot of experience in designing plants, which we know that, because they've designed all of ours. Just they didn't have as much experience with master planning, and Garver really stood out as the expert in that area.
Bob, I sat in on, on this and was part of the selection committee, not on the technical side. That's way over my head, but from the business side. We did look at location, you know, buy local, use local. That was one of the considerations. But in the grand scheme, the total package, the committee felt that Garver was the best consultant for this job. And one thing that really stuck out for me, from the business side, was their history of very low cost, or not low cost, their history of change orders. They, they presented that they have very few. That's something that sticks out to me, because change orders are things that can bite you in the back. They, the other work that they've done in the manhole, it was exceptional. The staff enjoyed working with them. They didn't have any problems. We, all of the proposal we received were good. We just felt that Garver stuck out above the others. Other firms could have done it. We just felt that they were the better firm for this job. They do have a local presence, not in Tyler, but in Athens. That's where they're going to work this project from. But in the grand scheme, I voted for Garver, thought they were the best ones for the job.
With that explanation, Mr. Mayor withdraw my motion.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Tiffany?
Move to approve M8.
Second.
Motion by Winn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
And now we are to the consent agenda. I'll entertain the motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Curtis, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to make my report not last as long as the rest of the meeting did. So the few, just primarily things of note, of just things we want to say thank you for is, the first one is our eighth annual School is Cool event. It's hard to believe it's been eight years of doing that event. Took place as a drive-through event at Fun Forest Park last week. We give thanks to the continued partnership between the city, Tyler Area Business Education Council, and Tyler ISD, and we were able to distribute nearly 2,000 backpacks to schoolchildren. Though this event wouldn't have been possible without the generous donations from over 50 local sponsors and the enthusiastic volunteers, including the entire TJC Apache football team. We appreciate Councilman Westbrook and Councilman Winn for coming out to help support the event. I think they're now kind of ex-officio coaches for TJC. So we expect a winning season this year, guys. And we had a lot of grateful parents and happy kids, as they were given different supplies and backpacks to get this year started off with. We also had our end-of-the-summer picnic at the Glass Recreation Center today to close out our, last week on Friday, to close out our summer camps. A special thank you to Tyler PD for cooking for the kids. In fact, James, it looked like y'all were having some fun there with the kids, just cooking and eating. And so a good time there was had by all. We'd like to thank also those who stopped by to serve food and join in the fun. Again, we had Councilman Westbrook and Councilman Winn, Stephanie Franklin, Chief Kobel and Chief Toler, Kedrick Turnbull also came out, as well as Latoya Young from the Tyler Business Education Council, to help with, make sure that the kids there had backpacks to get this year started and enjoy the summer program. And last, last but not least, we're also grateful for each member of our Parks and Recreation Team that helped make this summer a success and gave the kids a safe place to make memories this year. And then, one of the things that we did yesterday that I want to kind of draw attention to is, for several months, individuals have been staying under the bridge at Spring and Valentine Street. And at one point, there were approximately 30 tents that were under the bridge. The police department, through the past couple of weeks, especially through Officer Johnny Green, had worked with the Tyler Street Team to handle the constantly evolving situation that was going on over there. Several individuals were found traditional housing through the assistance of Officer Green, moved to shelters, and returned to family members. On August 9th, members of the Tyler Police Department, Code Enforcement and Solid Waste, worked to clean up the area and get in mode. And this was something that Officer Green provided to us. This job would have been very difficult without the help of Galen Billington and his crew from Solid Waste, Mike Cox and Jimmy White from Code Enforcement, and Lieutenant John Thornhill, who was there beside me helping clean up. This crew made a difficult job easy. I'm grateful for each and every one of them, and glad to be able to work with these guys. And we'd also like to just say a special thank you to the Tyler Police Department for their work on that. They did an amazing job with a very sensitive situation in turning it into something that is hopefully beneficial to those that were living there, homeless under the bridge. And that concludes my report, sir.
You're up.
I got a couple of quick, Ed, do you know how many backpacks that were given out at the School is Cool event? And I will say that I had a great time, and I had a great time with Councilman Westbrook in interacting with the TJC team. Those guys were fired up and having fun. It was, it was fun to see that. They really enjoyed it.
We expect there was about nearly 2,000 backpacks that were distributed at that event that they came through. And to kind of give you a timeframe, that is, I want to say that was from about, what, 5:30, 6 o'clock till about 7:30? So that frame of time, I mean, it's, the cars constantly came through.
And they started lining up three hours in advance?
Yes.
And Mr. City Manager, some of us could not get up there because of the traffic.
I didn't know the backways. Who'd have said, hey, can you get me in here in order to make it through there?
All right. We've got an executive session, so let me read all this. The city council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of the government code. Under Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 litigation deliberation regarding the following: Pending litigation or settlement offer involving Rental Care Group Texas Inc. and RCG East Texas LLP versus Health First TPA Inc. et al. Litigation is by its nature an ongoing process, and questions may arise as to trial tactics which need to be explained to the city council. Upon occasion, the city council may need information from the city attorney as to the status of, of the pending or contemplated litigation subject listed above. I don't think there's any action probably on this.
Let me point to the city attorney.
No anticipated action. Not sure how long it'll last, so feel free to stick around. Otherwise, we're going into executive session. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.